We'll get started.
Go ahead.
We have a moment of sought meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting of the Montegay County Commission to order is Wednesday, April 17th, at 10:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on our agenda is consent and approval with Renetta McClure, our county administrator. Good morning.
Good morning, Renetta.
You have no exonerations to approve. Minutes for April 10th, 2024. Vouchers, General County, 157,118. Coal Severance, 6,000. Magistrate Court, 324. 911, $6,003.32. Chestnut Ridge Park, 3,007.1166. Camp Muffley, 770.82. Mason Dixon Park, $2,078. Mon County Center, 6,455.38. Transportation Levy, 234,941.35. Fire Levy, 258.646.80. Recreation Levy, 162,699.95. Library Levy, $57,666.67. EMS Levy, 487.772.39. Reallocated Coal, $215. ARPA, 26,739.25. Purchasing Card vouchers, General County, 17,612.69. 911, 425.93. Chestnut Ridge Park, 481.36. Camp Muffley, 697.22. Mason Dixon Park, 283.76. For a voucher total of 1,430,572.51. We have budget revisions to have approved. One that requires state approval for the general fund for state grants. And then we have in-house revisions for various minor funds. One was for the recreation levy, County Fire Protection Fund, and EMS Salary Enhancement Fund. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the website and fiduciary orders for April 17th, 2024.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the consent and approval agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any additional fiduciary items?
Yes. You have a request for a hearing to be set before the County Commission in the Arthur P. Scottle Estate.
I move that we deny the request for hearing in the Arthur Scottle Estate.
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Limited, just simply this is a very old estate. It's been adjudicated by fiduciary commissioner, circuit court on many occasions. Judging from the petition filed, I don't see a pressing need for this body to review the information and to make an action on it, which is why I move not to have the hearing.
And I would tend to agree with you that this isn't an action that really, this is an action that needs to be taken in circuit court, not with the County Commission. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We also have an update in the Marjorie Langdon Estate. I think Ms. Hall's here.
Yes, we had, previously, we had given a 30-day extension to this objection for the parties to resolve. That deadline would have been April 12th. Estates have not received the withdrawal of the objection or any correspondence. Estates reached out to Mrs. Hall, and she was planning to be here. So I invite Ms. Hall to come up and give us an update as far as where this estate stands.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing me not to appear last time since I had an emergency funeral that came up. So thank you for that very much. The last 30 days have been productive. You all may have received an email from Mrs. Ross. She submitted it very late last evening to Stephanie. I do have a copy I can provide you all.
Right to our administrator.
We have been in communication, we have been talking before, but you gave the 30 days because they had had some additional questions and requested some additional documentation. It seems like I have provided everything that we have, and then I did not have any more communication from Mrs. Ross. So I had reached out to her again, and she had been out of town. She has three other siblings. As you recall, the objection was two-pronged. Her father had died, and we had still had him listed as the beneficiary, and so they objected and wanted, she wanted herself and her siblings replaced. So we did that in an amended filing after our very first appearance, when I appeared with my client several months ago. So we've done that. Then the second issue was about there's a manufactured home that is on property that is owned by one of the other heirs, and now there's a dispute about whether rent should be obtained and how much money is owed to the heirs for that home being rented. And so I provided the documentation about all the repairs that my client paid out of pocket for those, and as an executor, he's not required to pay out of pocket. And so we're in negotiations about how those fees should really count as the rent. And I've asked my client to dig through his records and not only provide the receipts, but also pictures of the damage because they were concerned that my client did cosmetic improvements to the home, not just repairs to the home. So he found as many pictures as he had, and we provided those. Well, last evening, as you can see in her response, she said that she received everything, but she wants to talk it over with her siblings, even though they did not join in the objection. I believe that, I'm optimistic that we've provided everything we can. Every time there's a question, a document, we're providing what we have that we'll be able to resolve it.
Okay. And according to Ms. Ross's email, she indicated that you guys are communicating and requested another 30 days to continue that process.
She initially, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
She initially requested that I just come and tell you all that. I felt it was important that you receive something showing, this is not just me saying that we're communicating, that she also corroborates what I'm saying.
From our point of view, at least from mine, the main objective is, with these deadlines, is to make sure that there's an active fiduciary working towards an end to reach the accomplished goal of settling the estate. It's obvious that you're working towards it. Sometimes these things take time. Based on that, I'd make the motion to grant the request for an additional 30 days to settle these issues.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. And would that date be from the 12th, or would that date be from today? I just want to make sure we're clear.
Today.
So that date from today.
Yeah.
So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Nice to see you.
Okay. Do we have any other fiduciary items?
No, sir.
Okay. Introduction to new employee personnel changes.
None.
None. Okay. Comments from the public. We will now open the meeting for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard must raise their hand, come forward and provide his or her name and address for the record. Please note that time will be limited at the discretion of the President.
Name is Louis Scottle, Senior. I live at 1444 Saratoga Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia. I have to appeal your denial because the circuit court order found the 2006 will non-voyed. This County Commission, on April the 16th, ordered Keith Pappas to return the estate of Arthur P. Scottle to, at the time, Judge Starcher, which that has not been fulfilled at this time, and your own order should have to be fulfilled before we can move forward to go to circuit court or wherever to be able to substantiate our case as to what has been improperly sold, what has been improperly distributed through the administrations of the 2006 will. This County Commission has the authority to be the estate court, and every time we have been to the circuit court, it's always been the trials and tribulations only was introduced with the 2006 will as if it was the proper will to probate. Your West Virginia codes state that when the court order found that will invalid and set aside, that makes it non-voyed, and the administrations of it are non-voyed. The Supreme Court made a ruling that when a will is non-voyed, then the next will or the will of record will be the proper will to administrate and is the only will of record to be recorded. There is so many injustices in this system that it needs to be looked at at the motion of hearing, which I have so much evidence to present, that will show this County Commission that you need to change your fiduciary system in estates because it is very corrupt at this time, and this will prove it. The fact is, I cannot get an attorney. I've went to Pittsburgh, I've been throughout the state of West Virginia, and there is such a glitch with the attorney's good old boy system, you want to call it. Everybody's got a conflict of interest. And yes, this estate has gone on for too long. I'm out $300,000 because I have two deeds of trust that I've had to pay off the bank notes for this estate in order to keep it in the estate, and it's never been satisfied or reimbursed. So I think you really need to take a look at this in a motion of hearing in front of you, not a fiduciary commissioner, because both fiduciary commissioners have only awarded the 2006 will, which is non-voyed. I don't understand how that can even go on record to be the proper will to be able to administer any further. Any questions? I have documentation here where this estate was given to Dalton Properties on June 1st, 2011, during the will contest, that should have never been sold. He never went to court and got an order to sell any properties, but he did, and this guy was given a line of credit for $1,185,000. According to Pappas's records and appraisements, this estate wasn't worth $600,000. Something's wrong here, people. You need to take a look at it and investigate it thoroughly before you make such a rash decision. That's what's happening here. We're being taken, and there's too many estates that are falling in the same trap.
Thank you, Mr. Scottle. Anybody else like to speak in public comment? Okay. Go ahead and close public comment. Next item on agenda is proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Do we have someone here to present the proclamation?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Hannah Richards, and the address is 1518 Mile Ground Road.
If I could ask just you to speak up a little bit. I have, I thought I had a soft voice. Thank you very much.
Yes, I will, sorry. Alrighty. So Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Montegay County. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. And whereas staff and volunteers of West Virginia sexual assault programs and other professionals have come together as the West Virginia Foundation for Rape Information Services, otherwise known as West Virginia FRIZ, to support each other in their work and provide the state of West Virginia and its citizens with a central source of information on sexual assault. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Montegay County through prevention education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center, otherwise known as RDVIC, strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Montegay County Commission joins anti-sexual violence advocates and support service programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. Along with the United States government and state of West Virginia, the Commission does hereby proclaim April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Montegay County, and applauds the efforts of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in promoting awareness about sexual assault.
Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I just wanted to say, you know, thank you guys for your support as always, and also, our biggest event of the year is going to be this Saturday for RDVIC. It is our Walking with Survivors. We ask our community to come out and support these survivors and our agency, and that information can be found on our website as well as our social media.
Where's it at and when?
It is going to be downtown. So it'll be held underneath the pavilion off of Spruce Street, and it will begin, I believe, registration begins at, oh gosh, I believe registration begins at 12? And it'll go on for a few hours. There will be food, activities, resources, resource tables, as well as the walk towards the middle of the event where we will walk through downtown in a circle and come back as the title, Walking with Survivors.
Well, thank you for coming here and presenting your proclamation, and thank you for all you guys do. You're a very important organization that the Commission wholeheartedly supports. So thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And you have, she has the signed proclamation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is grants. Colleen Kuhn, our County Commission Office Manager. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. So I have several requests for reimbursements. The first batch is for the Governor's Highway Safety Program. Safe Communities in the amount of $1,882.44. Then Click It or Ticket in the amount of $362.52. Impaired Driving in the amount of $3,509.28. And Distracted Driving in the amount of $317.70. And then I also have the Community Development Block Grant reimbursement in the amount of $1,693.44.
Move to approve the President signing the grant documents as presented.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
Received a letter from the State Auditor's Office approving the fiscal year 25 budget. So congrats.
That's what.
Congrats to you.
With no exceptions or.
Nope.
When we submitted it to them, we already provided the carryover now, so they always asked for, so I assume that that was okay.
That's the best, yep.
Okay. Well, that's good news.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other correspondence?
No.
No unfinished business. First item on the new business agenda is First Reading Regarding the Proposed Montegay County Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance. That's the Commission's preference.
I would, after reviewing recent opinions provided to us by our planner and by legal counsel, I'd make a motion to send the subdivision ordinance, or SALDO, back to the Planning Commission to reconcile it with recent changes that the legislature's made to Chapter 8A by adding Section 13, but with Senate Bill Number 782 that the Governor signed into law.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just clarification that we were unaware of this until the Governor signed the bill, and it just came before us.
Yeah. We had been well into our process to put this on the agenda for First Reading, Second Reading, Public Hearing. It was passed by the legislature on 3/4 and signed by the Governor on the 27th, I believe, of March. But there are, we have three different legal opinions that say that some of the changes do, could cause some problems with the current SALDO as in front of the Commission. So it doesn't seem to be a worthwhile effort to move forward with this version that could be in conflict. So I agree that it's a good stance to send it back to the Planning Commission to have these issues resolved, and then move forward with that process sometime in the near future. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In light of the motion we just passed, I would now move to cancel the Second Reading of the subdivision ordinance, SALDO, and the two scheduled public hearings in this regard.
Okay.
Second. And clarification, the reason why we have to cancel the Second Reading is because you have to do it two weeks after the First Reading. So we had to cancel everything.
We're essentially canceling the Second Reading and the public hearing so that, because this process is being paused until we can resolve these issues.
Legal issues.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Anything to add, Andrew, or you're good? Okay.
Andrew, thank you for, obviously, you'll carry the direction back to the Planning Commission, and we'll have a follow-up discussion on this. All right. Next item on the agenda is Consideration to Approve the Public Health Fees for Scheduled for the Montegay County Health Department. Basically, due to a change in statute, the Health Department is required to seek Commission approval for the scheduled fees that they can charge for services. So previously, the states set the maximum schedule fees. The fees in front of us for approval have been taken up by the Mon County Health Department Board of Health and approved for public posting, and upon meeting the required posting public notification process, we have been notified by the Health Department Board of Health. They have been approved by the Board of Health for submission to the Commission for approval, and that's what we have in front of us today. So upon approval, the Commission fees will be effective immediately. So do we have a motion?
So moved to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Did I clarify that perfectly, Anthony? You have anything else you want to add, or?
Good morning. So thank you, first of all, for taking, considering the environmental health fees. Yeah, I mean, that's the process. There was change to Chapter 16 of the state code, and then also changes in Senate Bill 17 to two Code of State rules that dealt with setting maximums, like you said, for environmental health. So now the new process is, you know, the added layer of the County Commission now has to approve the fees. So that's where we're at today.
Okay. And I will ask, you have our new health officer here. Would you introduce him, too?
Sure. Dr. Brian Huggins. He started about three weeks ago, so we're glad to have him aboard. You know, I think we have a great health officer now, and I think we'll have a great health officer for the future.
Thank you. Do you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Brian Huggins. I'm actually a West Virginia native, so grew up in Wheeling, West Virginia. Went to West Liberty University, West Virginia School of Osteopathic Medicine. Spent about 12 years on active duty in the Air Force. Spent a little bit of time in Alaska and Germany. And now, my wife and I have a, married an Alaskan, and she and I are wanting to settle down in West Virginia. So we're really excited for this opportunity to be with you guys. And did my residency, UNC Chapel Hill in Preventive Medicine and General Public Health, got my MPH there as well. So really, really looking forward to just being a part of this organization and continuing to do all the great work that that gentleman over there has started, and yeah.
Yes, and we do have the Public Health Officer Emeritus, Dr. Smith, here with us.
Emeritus. Did he die? Did he die?
You do have big shoes to fill, but I'm sure that the citizens need to know that they're in good hands with the work that Anthony's done. And we have our Environmental Program Manager, Todd Rosenkirk here. Also, you guys have a great team, Mr. Dr. Smith. You've put together a great team. So all you have to do is just keep it, keep everything, keep the momentum rolling forward. So.
Keep rowing the boat. That's right. I wanted to offer my personal thanks to the Commission. It's been better part of a decade that we've interacted, and I think that our relationship has matured. We're very happy to work with the Commission and keep you guys informed. I think in my very first meeting before you, I said that my job was to keep our name out of the press and keep your name out of the press. So so far, I think that we've been successful in moving public health forward in this county, but it's been done with your all's support, both personally and financially, and we couldn't have done this without you, but I agree. It's been the establishment of the infrastructure. We started with kind of a sleepy little health department. We've built a business office. We've put some key people in positions. I was personally a little concerned that we'd established a bit of a powerhouse and how to keep this rolling. And Dr. Huggins sort of presented out of the sky here, and we were happy to bring him on board. He's 25 years my junior, so hopefully you'll get a lot of rowing out of him. But I thank you personally and as a representative of the Health Department for your all's support. So thank you all.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank both doctors. So we veered off a little bit, but we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Your fees are approved. Consideration of Requisition Number 89 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisition is for $798,781.01. These are for collections in the month of February.
To approve the requisition as presented.
Second.
Okay. And correctly noted, the collections are 798. It's up a little bit from last month, but as we noted, last month, we were down, and there's a historical drop in the month of February, which we're still doing some research over. But right now, we're still projecting to be over last year's collection by about 2%. So still, still moving forward. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consideration to Approve Requisition Number Eight for the University Town Center Series 2023 A Property Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $4,034.60, and that would be paid to Steptoe &amp; Johnson for their legal services.
That's for the UTC Property TIF administrative fees. So we have a first.
Move to approve requisition number eight as presented.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
These are going to sound familiar. Consideration to Approve Requisition Number Eighty-Six for the UTC Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $2,372.50. Again, those funds will be paid to Steptoe &amp; Johnson.
Move to approve the requisition as presented.
Second.
First and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to Approve Requisition Number Seventeen for the Star City Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $273.75. Again, this is for the Steptoe &amp; Johnson. A lot of these are for the annual report that they had to put together.
Move to approve requisition number seventeen as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration to Approve Requisition Number Ten for the Mon General Maple Drive Series 2016 C Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $503.75, and it's paid to Steptoe &amp; Johnson.
Move to approve requisition ten as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. To consider approving the commencement of negotiations with the West Virginia Department of Transportation regarding the I-79 Chaplain Hill Gateway Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second with explanation.
Okay. So this, the Chaplain Hill Gateway Grant, the infra grant that was awarded to the Commission is for the improvements to the Chaplain Hill Gateway, and we've had a number of conversations about how that's going to jive with the original project plan for Exit 155, where the state had committed 66 million to that project. This grant approved 54,320. Administering this grant, administratively, the best way to proceed would, from talking to numerous individuals and getting numerous opinions on how we should proceed with this would be to assign this grant to the Department of Highways. We would still have the guardrails in place for Mont County to be in the middle of the project management, but we would essentially be assigning it, and they have a lot more of the horsepower and the tools and the infrastructure to deal with all the environmental assessments and all that. So just, it's another good opportunity for us to work directly with the Department of Highways and really move this Exit 155 project forward. So I've asked our MMPO director, Bill Austin, to, he's had some experience with assigning grants to the Department of Highways, so he's agreed to help shepherd the process and kind of be our eyes and ears. We're going to be hiring other, both technical consultants and legal consultants along the way to assist in this. But the first step is for us to assign the grant to the Department of Transportation, and we have to have an agreement in place with the Department of Transportation to do that. So that's first step. So what we're doing here and what we're approving is to direct our administrator to make that first contact with the Department of Highways and initiate that contract process so we can get that approved. Once we get that approved, we will jointly petition the Department of Transportation, the federal Department of Transportation, to allow us to transfer the grant. And then once that happens, then the federal Department of Transportation works with the State Department of Transportation in concert with us to administer this project. So this is the best way to move it forward, and I think this is the logical step. Bill, did I have anything else to, do you have anything else to add regarding the process?
I would like to congratulate the commission on the recipient of this grant. It's a very positive step. As you all are aware, the MMPO did receive a RACE grant as a direct recipient, and in our discussions with federal highway and the State Department of Transportation, we determined the easiest, most effective way to get the grant implemented would be to turn over that grant to the Division of Highways. As Commissioner Secora stated, the NEPA process is something the State Department of Transportation works through regularly, plus it is their right of way. And primarily, it is much easier for them to come up and develop a plan that can be workable and implementable under federal regulations. They do it all the time. At the same time, the MPO, when we did our Green Bag Road grant to the Division of Highways, we did put in place committees that would be overseeing the development of that plan that, using those RACE funds, and we would anticipate doing the same thing for Montnegaya County to have oversight for the overall project. So for example, the proposed grant includes a dedicated multipurpose path for cyclists and pedestrians. The county would have the oversight to make sure that that happens in a way that serves the entire public. And so this is the most efficient way to get the project implemented in a quick timeframe, and it would also dovetail very well with the Department of Transportation's interchange improvement project for Exit 155 and make sure that it's all coordinated well together. So I would recommend to the county commission that you take this action and work to develop an agreement to ensure that there's proper oversight so the grant that was proposed is implemented in the way that it was proposed.
Okay. Thank you, Bill, and I appreciate your, in advance, I thank you in advance for all your help and as we go down this path.
I'm more than happy to.
Thank you all.
I also want to clarify what President Secora said to the community. We are still going to be at the table, and we will have to hire legal help to make sure when we do the contracts, we learn that at all places when you do a federal, this large amount of grant, that we need someone to represent us, to verify the contract stating they're doing what they're doing. So we're not just turning everything over to the state, and I want that real clear. We are at the table.
So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. County administrator, consider yourself directed.
Okey dokey. Consideration of proposal received by the county commission from the West Virginia Communities Risk Pool for the county's general liability and workers' compensation insurance with the effective date of July 1, 2024.
Do I have a motion to approve the policies as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Renetta, would you like to provide a summary? And you did a nice little summary of the difference between this year and last year.
Sure.
And being a board member of the risk pool, I'm happy to, I had advanced knowledge that actual credits were coming forward, so if you would kind of summarize some of that information?
Actually, for the last, I think, three years, three fiscal years, we've received a planned credit from the risk pool, and that's great. I mean, that means that, you know, counties are not filing the claims that are meeting the premium, so that's great news. Overall, it was a 4.01% difference, a decrease. So the total for the two plans is $717,212. We saw a decrease in our property, equipment, and automobiles, and workers' comp. 13.24% of that was workers' comp. So that decreased significantly, so.
And this is a decision made by the commission to go to the risk pool, what, five years ago?
Maybe seven?
It's been a few, but it's been a very, a very good decision. As you see, our rates are going down. It's approximately, we're paying, this year we'll pay $28,000 less than last year. And I don't know anybody that can say that their insurance is going down. But we're also providing, we're providing a better, they're providing a better product to the county. We've had nothing but a good experience with our claims and with the whole process, so I want to compliment the WV Corp. Board and the people that we have that are running the risk pool, and I'm going to screw up the names. Steve and.
Steve Rawlings, Mike Rezak.
Steve Rawlings, Mike Rezak, and all of that group that has been, it's been a very good decision, and it's been a good relationship. And I'm happy to see these decreases. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any other agenda items?
No, sir.
It's not too often we get up to aye, but there's a lot on this agenda. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Okay, seen none. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, really good news. This past week, I met with Jonathan Board, Executive Director of First Foundation Program, and we toured a site where we're asking him to consider to have his main office in the city of Morgantown in Montnegaya County, away from Charleston. And I'll just leave it at that. And it went very positive. So that went real well. The second is that for public information, Montnegaya County is in charge of running the Region 4 First Foundation meetings, and we did send out a letter and an email to all our municipalities and counties to, A, discuss a West Virginia First Foundation Regional Director appointment, reappointment, because Jonathan Board is now the Executive Director. The second thing is to meet and greet those individuals who will be on our review committee when we get the applications, and that meeting at this time is scheduled, hold on, for Thursday, May 9, at 9:30, in the county chamber rooms. And all those letters were now, and we look forward to getting information. The third is what I'm very interested, last night I was invited by Zach Rush, who is, yes, the new mayor of Blacksville. There is a mayor, and there is a city council, and they ran the meeting exceptionally well. They invited me to attend. And basically, the big issue that they're discussing, and I'm sure with the Health Department here that will find this interesting, they are having the same problems that Star City's having, where the sanitary and the stormwater system is going into one place. There is a problem developing, and they are looking to see how they're going to use their upper funding to probably not only do what is the smoke test, but then also to come up with solutions. So again, I want to thank Blacksville City Council, and we now have representation, and we look forward to have a great communication with them.
Just looking forward to our ribbon cutting today with the New 911 Center. It's been a surprisingly quick process for as large of a facility as that was. I think I just came on commission when that, when that plan was hatched as far as where to go, and here we are doing the ribbon cutting. I know they're already open and running, and it's so far, so good. Knock on wood here. So that's all. Congratulations to the higher-ups over there, and I look forward to putting that part of it to bed and moving on.
Today is a regular day. We do have our ribbon cutting Friday. I just have, I believe our staff reports, we won't have staff reports, so we'll try to fit that in today. And I just have my broadband tag up on Friday. Monday's Earth Day. I'll do my annual presentation to Eastwood Elementary. And then the county administrator and I have a follow-up with USI as we're continuing to negotiate our insurance rates for next year. And Tuesday, we have a HR proactive call. So it's a little bit of a slow, slow couple days getting back in, back from a little bit of vacation. I do want to thank Lee for all your years and all the work together. I obviously haven't been on the trail riding my bike very often because I haven't gotten any calls from you. But it seems like the only time Lee would call me, I'd be in the middle of a workout somewhere. So I stopped riding on the trail because I was always getting interrupted. No. During COVID, that was the only place I could ride, but now I can, I can ride in my basement, so. But seriously, Lee, I do really appreciate all your work in your, that you've done over the years. You really have taken the Health Department and moved it into a business and a, something that's the envy of the rest of the state. You made a great decision a couple years ago to split your duties and bring on Anthony to act as the CFO. I think that's your official title, right, Anthony?
Administrator.
But, so that could take a lot of the administrative things off your, and Anthony's put together an excellent team to really, I'm envious of your, the accounting side of your team, the grant side of your team, the, you know, the team that Anthony's put together that really runs the business office side of it and then allows you to really focus on public health. You know, you guys have a great team. Todd is a, I've known Todd for years, and he's done, doing a great job in his position as the Health Environmental Program Manager. And I don't want to slate any of your other program managers because you guys have just an awesome team, so, and it's all, all to, you know, thanks to you. So this, this community really owes you, you know, a lot of thanks for everything you've done to really create a solid infrastructure and foundation for our Health Department going forward. And it's, you know, there's, it's not easy to tell how many lives you have affected, but you've really affected a lot in a positive way. And so we really appreciate all your years of service. And Dr. Huggins, you know, you've got a, you've got big shoes to fill, but I think that you've got the infrastructure there, and I think you can take the Health Department to the next level. So thank you. To any of that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.